All right, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1410. Today is February 6th, is now 8:00 PM. Let us start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams, Brown.
Here.
Clark, Harrison.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Here.
All right, I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Clark, I mean Adams.
I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Adams.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion to excuse passes. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the council minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on. Moving on to item number three, which is presentations, and we have no presentations this time. But we will need to start to get the business of the month going again, Don. So at the next Economic Development Commission meeting, that's something we probably should discuss.
Yes.
All right, and then moving on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council, to ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Loretta Allen, and I have two questions. My first question is I wanted to get an update on the property that is across the street from us on 641 Way Cross Road. That was the property for development, potential development of the 99 units. Is that Cameron Park? Okay, okay. So I saw that on part of the discussion. And then the other question I wanted to ask are the grocery store issues. The fact that we have lost two grocery stores, we've lost Aldi's, and we have also lost Walmart. And so I wanna know what the city is doing about making sure that we're not a food desert. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Allen. Well, currently, the development that is happening at 641 Way Cross is, by the last time I checked, is still moving according to plan. It will be 99 homes, and that's half ranch, and then some town, or, yeah, townhome style. But, oh, so we will be breaking ground this summer, actually.
Okay.
So that's actually pretty soon, but, yeah, or even as early as spring.
Okay.
When we break ground. But then, as far as your questions about the grocery store, I have the same concerns. So currently, we've been in conversation with Kroger, just to make sure that they are maintaining a really good partnership with the City of Forest Park. Aldi didn't give us exactly any, like, they gave us no notice or no indication of, as to why they've left, but we do know that there are other grocers out there that we could approach, because we do have these, you know, we have, we have space, essentially. And then we've also been in conversation with Walmart about their property, 'cause both entities of Aldi and Walmart, although they left, they still maintain ownership of the buildings. So if we could potentially get access or control of them, then we can open up the conversation to other grocers to come into them, but until, you know, until we get site control, so to speak, we can't do anything. So we're just doubling down on our partnership with Kroger. And they have told us in a firm commitment that they have every intention to stay. They were already doing, you know, they're already doing well, but now, I'm sure, as you can imagine, they're doing excellent, you know, 'cause people are, people are going to there. But we, we would actually like more, more service from Kroger, you know, if they can start doing things like delivering groceries to some of our older residents. And then also, sometimes I go to other communities and I see what they do with the marketplace, and I would like them to, you know, increase their commitment financially by, by doing a, making a few facelifts and improvements on that building. And potentially, if they can look at one of the Aldi or the Walmart area buildings, you know, so then they can build an even bigger location, because we're, in my opinion, my biased opinion, right, we're incredibly worth it. But Forest Park, at least under our watch on council, will never become a food desert. That is not something that we would allow. But there are other grocery store options that, that we could approach. I don't, I don't know how people feel about things like, you know, Whole Foods or Trader Joe's, but I'm not, I am not opposed to approaching anyone if our residents deem it necessary for us to do so.
Right, right. And I won't ask, I won't ask our city manager to make further comments, 'cause I can tell your voice is, is not good, but I remember at a previous meeting, you indicated that you would speak with the residents on Way Cross Road. So several of them have asked me in passing if I know anything, and I told them I haven't heard anything. So I will let them know, and then I will also let them know that you will, will still speak with us in the future. Oh, at the library? Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anytime there's, there's gonna be any development or any, any new developments with, with a project like that, we'll make sure that there are public hearings for, for people to come and give comment.
Yeah, that's part of the agreement. That's before.
Yeah, and everybody will be notified by mail, and then we'll make sure it's on the city website and everything as well. There'll probably be signs out there, too, that'll give you the, the time and date, but, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Charisse Wilson again, and I'm actually coming here to speak on behalf of somebody who couldn't make it tonight because she's sick. Her name is Fran Ingram, and she lives on Brunswick Drive. And she would like to replace the mosaic on the bench at the senior center, and she's willing to do all the work, and also willing to make it where it's removable, so she could take it home during the winter months where it doesn't get damaged. All she's asking is the city reimburse her for the cost of the mosaic and the glue, I believe, and she said the cost has less than $100. I don't know who that would go through, but I told her I would mention that tonight. So that's why I'm here.
Have her give me a call.
Okay, will do. She said there's a bench in front of the senior center that's kind of falling apart.
That's the women's club bench.
Yeah, that one, that's it. And she wants, she does mosaics all the time, so she wants to do that, and she's volunteering her time and craftiness to do that. She's a really good mosaic artist. So I told her I would mention that, and that's part of why I'm here.
Actually, that sounds like a really good project for Quality of Life to get involved in, you know, public art.
I was wondering if that would be, would that would be through at Keller.
Well, I mean, public art is something that Quality of Life, you know, it falls under that category, 'cause it does, we all benefit from it. So if, if, did she give any indication on what design that she was thinking about replacing it with? Okay, so we would need to look into that, and then that might be something that, that your committee, you know, might be able to look into.
Probably just, might get, maybe a brand new one as well.
Is it brand new?
Update the old one, because of the historical significance.
Okay.
The women's club.
Okay.
Then have another one, that would be really nice.
That would be nice. Yeah, I think we need more, you know, beautification projects, or more public art projects, you know, just 'cause we're suburbs, don't mean that we can't, you know, have mosaics and murals and everything and the like. All right, so that concludes item number, I'm sorry, council.
There's, there was a question that was posed by, by a resident. I said I'd mention it. Mr. Mark Hosterman, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing it correctly, but, lives in the R section and was really concerned about the roads over there, to which we responded that, you know, our roads are based on a rating system in terms of when they are, when they're repaired and things like that. Didn't know if there's anything that we can perhaps put out to the public that, that could even indicate with the colors, or the red, green, when they're up for being repaired or not, or just some update.
We have the map, it's been updated, and we'll be presenting that with our recommendations for this year's street program here very soon. Those streets are definitely in need of repair, and we've got them on the list for next year.
Okay, thank you.
You said he was in the R section? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so that concludes item number four on the agenda, which is communications from the public. Moving on to item number five, which is reports from standing committees, and then we're gonna start with Councilmember Clark.
Oh, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a report at this time.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Clark. I have a few items on the work session. Do you have any more to add? I have grass assessments, police clerk, union contract, and then the updated salary ordinance.
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to say thank you for everybody for, I was out on military leave a month in January, which is strange, because the military says, hey, January, you gotta go, when it's usually June, but I'd like to thank the council for, excuse me, and the residents of Forest Park. I have nothing to add at this time, but for the work session, I'd like to revisit the speed bumps.
Okay, speed, yes, absolutely. All right, hand that there. Thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Moving on to first Vice Mayor Hope.
I don't have a report, but, Don, I mentioned to you earlier before the meeting, one of my concerns.
I looked into those trees, I'm, I'm body nut founds.
Okay.
Looks if we can.
Okay, that's.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, that's it, so me, I don't have anything to add.
All right, thank you for that. We'll be going to second Vice Mayor Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say that the Quality of Life Commission's Board Meeting was January the 24th, and it was their first official meeting, and it was a very productive meeting, and the board voted to have meetings on the fourth Tuesday of each month. And they voted on their president, who is Ms. Commissioner Marsha Watts, and then their secretary, Ms. Charisse Wilson, and so we wanna thank them for stepping up in the leadership role, and we're just excited to get things going, and, and so they have a lot of ideas, and so we will see them a lot in council, and so we ask for your support when they're trying to push initiatives. And so they are working on a grant right now with We Thrive, and so there's a meeting November the 2nd, 7th, which is tomorrow, and so we're just coming up with some ideas on how to submit the application and what the citizens may want for this grant. And so we're hoping that we get it, and, but they're meeting to brainstorm, so that completes my report.
Okay, thank you for that. Dr. Moore, and do you have any work session items to add?
Can we talk about the road repairs? I know Councilmember Clark mentioned it, but I know we're supposed to have our Main Street done in November. Can we revisit that and see when the timeline is for that to occur? 'Cause I know we voted on it, and we were expecting it to be done 2022, and so if we can just update us of when the road repairs will be.
Okay. I think that's a good idea, 'cause it'll, we'll also have to.
Contractor, uh, we have some issues.
Oh, contractor issues, okay. But we all, we'll also need to factor in, if we do a sorta ask for that, the infrastructure money.
Uh, what do I think we ask? I think we gotta approve for Kenra.
Oh, did we? Okay, good, good. All right.
And we also, we also received 1.7 million from the feds, now, out of their, out of their budget that they just recently passed, to, to fix Kemper's stormwater, and that could be a three or four-year project down the road, but it's not 1.7 million dollars.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, the most recent infrastructure bill.
All right, that's good.
I'll give you updates on that.
Okay.
That'd be a good presentation.
Okay, 'cause I think we were expecting that our roads will be done in November, and so we had a contract with this particular vendor, and so I'm just curious why, what, why, what's the delay?
Right. All right, thank you for that, Dr. Moore. And then moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, and do you have any work session items to add?
I don't know, I think the road project would be sufficient, in my opinion, to get details.
Okay, that's great. All right, that concludes item number five, which is reports from standing committees. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report, which is mine. I actually am happy to report that I did attend the State of the County address from the new council president, Alicia Reese. So she did make the claim that the county is going to extend another service out to Forest Park. That is still gonna be determined which department it is, but it'll be a number of jobs for our city, so we welcome any continued partnership with our, our county commissioners and any offices that wanna come to Forest Park, 'cause we do have a, a few out here currently, but the more the merrier, that's what we, we want. But then also, I did want to announce that I, for the city staff, last year, when we won, we became AFC champions, we asked for a game ball, we did not get a game ball, but this year, even though we still didn't, we didn't become AFC champions, we do have a signed game ball from our, our cornerback, Mike Hilton. So I wanted to dedicate this to the City of Forest Park staff, so everybody can pass this around, 'cause Forest Park is a part of the county, and we got Bengals fans out here, too. So we want the Bengals to know that anytime you play and any milestone that you celebrate, we celebrate with you as Forest Park residents, and residents can always come in and see the game ball, but Don, I'll leave this to you to put in a, a glass case or something.
Voice of honor here. At my office.
And we just want the, we want the Bengals to know that we appreciate the, the organization, and we celebrate with you, even though we would like to be celebrating the Super Bowl next year, next year.
Next year.
All right, and that actually concludes my report. So moving on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report. Don?
I think I'll, I'll pass it, I will make sure that I have a, a nice, long report at the next meeting.
Okay.
My voice is just not ready for it tonight.
I completely understand. That was you rooting for the Chiefs, huh? So you're not just.
No.
Yeah? Yeah, oh, my goodness. But yeah, I understand. All right, so thanks for that, Don. Moving on to item number eight, which is other reports, and we're gonna start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do wanna commend you for not giving out any extra motivational speeches prior to the Kansas City game. I reviewed a public records request. We're getting involved on this issue of intellectual property and whether it's a public record or not, and I've spoken with Takiya, gave her an example, you know, you go out and build a house, and you pay for those building plans, you can't then just let those building plans go out into the public, because whoever authored those plans has an intellectual property right to those plans. That's how they make their living, they sell those plans. So we have to be careful about what plans we do allow to be public. If they are generic in nature, they can be public. If the presenter of those plans or the draw of those plans give us permission, they can be public, but otherwise, they should be restricted. That's a specific exclusion for public records requests under our state statute. Also, I had the opportunity to present the ordinance, you'll be considering tonight, changing membership in the commission from 7 to 9, and the last thing, I already know in advance, I have a conflict for the meeting February 20. I would ask permission to be excused from that meeting.
Okay.
Rarely do I get such advance notice, but that would be the end of my report.
All right, thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for our law director? All right, hearing none. We're gonna move on to the next report, which is gonna be from our clerk of council, Mrs. Takiya Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 02-2023 through 07-2023, and resolution numbers 02-2023 through 04-2023 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. All right, gonna move on to item number nine, which is new business, and I need a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules, sorry, a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by only ordinance numbers 02-2023 through 07-2023. These ordinances were.
Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that these were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 02-2023 by title only?
Ordinance number 02-2023, an ordinance accepting, accepting the recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding the planning commission's refusal to authorize a special exception for a plasma Ferris Center at 1135 West Kemper Road and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so we will vote on this one tonight, but this is actually relevant, because we did just discuss Aldi. Like I say, Aldi is still the current holder of the location where they had their former grocery store. The planned business that they would like to put in there is not in conformity with our zoning code, so it was actually struck down by our planning commission, and then Aldi actually appealed to our zoning board of appeals, and the planning commission did everything within their power. Everything was, they followed procedure accordingly, and the zoning board of appeals upheld the planning commission's decision to reject this plasma center. So that is what this ordinance is in relation to, so I just want everybody to know that we welcome business to come to the City of Forest Park, and we wanna continue really good relations with those businesses, but this is not the type of business that is in conformance with our zoning code, and with that, I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, will the clerk please read the motion on the, I'm sorry?
I would just like to make sure the public is aware, in addition to what Mayor Brown has said, you know, that, that plasma Ferris Center also is not necessarily servicing all, you know, in terms of what, what they're taking from the plasma, and then it being held here in the City of Forest Park and actually going to our residents as well. So we don't want residents to think that, you know, that these plasma services are going to these dialysis or any, any other place here in the city. That was, that is not, that would not be the case. It would actually be exported outside of city limits.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, resolution number 02-2023 passes. Moving on, will the clerk please read resolution number 03-2023?
Resolution number 03-2023, an ordinance establishing the City of Forest Park Way Cross Residential Incentive District Fund.
All right, and this is a first reading, so we will not be voting on this tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, moving on, will the clerk please read the next ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 04-2023, an ordinance establishing the City of Forest Park Cameron Residential Incentive.
All right, moving on, will the clerk please read the next ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 06-2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 150 Land Usage Regarding Special Exceptions and Conditional Uses.
Okay, and will the clerk please read the last ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 07-2023, an ordinance amending Section 37.02 of the Forest Park Code of Ordinances in order to increase the number of commissioners for the Economic Development Commission from seven members to nine.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Just as a general reminder, as these are first readings, council does not vote on these until the second reading, so we will vote on these on our next council meeting. All right, I need another motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers 02-2023 through 04-2023 by title only.
All right, is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that these were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, council member. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Harrison.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes. Will the clerk please read resolution number 02-2023 by title only?
Resolution number 02-2023, a resolution to accept and authorize the payment of an invoice between the City of Forest Park Fire Department and Atlantic Emergency Solutions INC.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I move that we adopt resolution number 02-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just support the previous passage in the budget for the fire department to, to make the purchase of this ladder truck, so something that would definitely benefit not only Forest Park, but for surrounding cities, too, so.
Okay, thank you for that, council member. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Hope.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, resolution number 02-2023 passes. Moving on, will the clerk please read resolution number 03-2023 by title only?
Resolution number 03-2023, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the capital budget funding for park improvements.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move that we adopt resolution number 03-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Here is to help improve our, our parks with improvements, so with that, I make a motion that we adopt.
All right, thank you for that, council member. Will the clerk please read, oh, call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hope.
All right, resolution number 03-2023 passes, unless you got a problem with that, Don?
No problem.
All right, will the clerk please read resolution number 04-2023 by title only?
Resolution number 04-2023, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Flock Group INC. to provide a ALPR Advanced License Plate Reader System for the City of Forest Park.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move that we adopt a resolution number 04-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
In short, with some of the shortfall that our police department faced with having proper police to assist and, and provide the service, this, this system will help support our officers to deal with critical issues that may arise within the city and surrounding cities, so with that and having an understanding of the status of how this system will be utilized, I move that we adopt for resolution number 04-2023.
Second.
Really quickly, Don, did we come in on a number on how many?
We're starting out with 13.
13.
We may bring back, we plan on bringing back a number that would be 20, so an additional seven, but that would be later on, once we get the first ones in.
Okay.
See how they work, and if we have enough budget, then we would increase the budget, but that would be another discussion. This initial purchase will be 13.
Okay, and then we would have to revote on the next seven.
Yes.
All right. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Alright, resolution number zero four dash twenty-twenty-three passes. And that concludes the new business. So is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Alright, and we getting out in record time, so I wanna thank everybody for participating, and I think this is a time that we should just come together and reflect. Now, council adjourned.